Please stand for fudge lesions.
......................................................
Heavenly Father, we come before you just asking Lord for your grace and mercy. We ask that you cover us in the blood of Jesus, Lord. We ask for all those that are in the symbol at this council meeting that you bless each and every individual. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Clerk Golick roll call.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Ullaki.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa. Opinker.
Here.
Thank you Clerk Golick. Now we're moving on. We have a presentation this evening. Pop Warner, John and Zane Raisin come up to the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michelle Raisin. I'm the Scholastic's manager and vice president for Northlake Pop Warner. This is my husband, John. He's a coach. And my son, Zane, he's a player. My daughter, Olivia, is a cheerleader. I was here in spring to talk to you about our scholar program. And I asked if some of the councilmen and women would be kind enough to donate to help our scholars make a trip to San Diego. Several of you did donate. And on behalf of Northlake Pop Warner, I'd like to thank you. We raised enough money to send five young men to San Diego. One of them was my son, Zane. We'd like to thank the city as a whole. We'd like to thank the Parks Department for giving us the opportunity to practice at Pulaski Park. Our cheerleaders just took first place yesterday for the Junior Midget Division and cheerleading.
First.
First in state. And we have a 11-year-old team that is going to play in the state finals this weekend at Maryville High School at 8:00 a.m. So, good things are happening here in Hammond. We appreciate your support. We've made several programs for the gentleman and lady that contributed to the scholar thing able to go. The boys got together, they wrote a report. We put in some pictures. So, if possible, can we give these to the councilmen?
Sure can.
My son, Zane, was one of the five scholars that attended the national banquet in San Diego. He, again, will be a national scholar this year. Olivia this year is eligible, age-eligible. You have to be in fifth grade or higher. And I'm proud to say that her, along with six other Northlake participants, again, will be recognized both regionally and nationally. If possible, Zane would like to take a minute, tell you a little bit about his trip and some of the adventures and things he got to do while in San Diego.
How you doing, Zane?
Good, thank you. While we were in San Diego, we walked, we were able to go to a Cubs game in which the Cubs beat the Padres three to zero. And I was able to watch batting practice before the game on the field and go in the dugout. And I got a baseball signed by Dexter Fowler and David Ross.
Cool.
Awesome.
While I was there, I also got to meet some celebrities such as Michael Caine, who's a sports announcer from ESPN. Susan Francia, who is an Olympic championship rower. Peggy Llewellyn, NHRA Drive Racing Champion. And Colias Campbell, who is a defensive end for the Arizona Cardinals. We also got to go aboard the USS Midway, which is an aircraft carrier that is docked in San Diego. And we got to go to San Diego Sea World and the San Diego Zoo.
Great.
Very cool.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, I want to thank the city and the Parks Department for letting us use their facilities. And just thanks, thanks to the councilmen and thanks for the community. There, there is a lot of positive things going on with our youth. You know, you hear a lot of the negatives, and there's just a lot of positive things going on with through, through our sports organization because we push the scholastics. We make sure the kids focus on school. And some of these kids have been getting recognized by having the top grades in the United States. And that's what these kids were rewarded for in San Diego, for having the highest grades in the United States in the Pop Warner organization. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, folks.
Keep up the good work.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I, I would like to say thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Raisin and Zane and Olivia. You know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort on the part of the parents to dedicate to the children in our city. So, thank you so very much for everything that you do for the future of our children and our city. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to reading amendments.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes as written from October 10th, October 13th, and October 6th.
Second. It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilwoman Vines, accept the minutes. Is there any discussion on acceptance of the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it's passed. Moving on to approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims October 7th through October 21st, 2015, for council meeting October 26th, 2015, beginning with claims dated 10/2015 and ending with claims dated Claim number 5630 through claim number 5868 for a total of $2,321,572.87. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spitali to accept the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have one amendment. Claim number 5869, $9,990 to Kelly McCollage for invoice for college bound for Kelly Rastnak. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs on acceptance of amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick roll call on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Amendment claims pass eight zero, one absent. Now the claims as written, Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass eight zero, one absent. Moving on to public hearing, there is none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
See this correspondence that says, Dear Mayor, excuse me, Mayor McDermott and Council, City Council Persons, Hammond is a unique place in the region housing market. We have a surplus of affordable homes and on the market, many needing remodeling. So, in understanding how the city is related to departments and more reasonable accommodations for individuals who purchase estate and interest in making improvements of properties in Hammond, what appears to fall at a white wayside in the failure to establish performances, timeframes for their remodels, which result in spectacular purchasing property, leaving the property to continue to deliver, deteriorate, depressing adjustments, properties, values, a neighborhood to home buyers, increasing the residence, explore to crime, vandalism, squatters, as well as affecting excess value of tax revenue. Leonard Turner purchased a 47 Mason Street on October 23rd, 2012 for $18,000. The Lake County Assistant's Office indicates Ms. Texas received statements from the Mason Street property of 209 Kingston, New Lennox, Elicnuay, 60451. A photo of 208 Kingston below appears as well-cared home, neatly maintained, medicated, and appears as well-maintained as the residence of her home. October 20, October 2015 enters the fourth year Kingston 47 Mason Street ownership as the date of 47 Mason Street is vacant, most likely unhabitable. It appears that only, the only work completed on the resident is the partially completed metal roof installed in the first year of ownership. The northwest portion of the metal roof appears to have never been installed. The wood deck roof is in only protective, keeping snow and rain, water out of the building. It is unknown of the wild animals are now using it for habit. Hammond residence should not be stabilizing sections are explored to such conditions found in this residence. As residents of the block, we are concerned that this, this property has been vacant for three years and may now be unhabitable. Should Ms. Tichener, T-I-C-H-E-N-O-R, which is to follow, do the remodeling of the property, we ask that the significant of the frames of the deadline of six months are less. Should she not respond and not meet the frame, she is welcome to donate the property to her interest in Hammond nun for profit. And are the city takes steps to condemn or tear down the property? And here's a copy of it, and it can be submitted to the inspector department. Clerk Golick, here you are.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
That correspondence was addressed to the mayor and all of the city council?
Let me see the top of that. It says, Mayor McDermott and, it says Mayor McDermott and city council persons.
Oh, I, because I didn't get a copy of that. If I could, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
If you want to make a copy, you more than welcome to have it.
Any other communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Motion to clerk make a copy for all nine councilmen, with your attorney also.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. That Clerk Golick makes a copy for all councilmen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, the community and Crime Watch meetings that are upcoming, as I always read them. Coming up on Wednesday, November 4th, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, 6:30 p.m. Edison Community Watch on the road ordinarily meets the last Friday of, I'm sorry, the first Friday of the month. This month, they asked that we move the meeting up. So, Edison on the road will meet at Golden Manor Senior Building on Wednesday, November 4th at 1:00 p.m. Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School Friday, November 6th, 9:15 a.m. Jefferson Crime Watch will meet Wednesday, October 28th at Jefferson School, 6:30 p.m. And the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, October 27th at the American Legion on Goslin at 6:30 p.m. Also coming up this Saturday is Trunk or Treat. Edison Community Watch is partnering with the Eastside Community Council and Home Depot to host the, how many annual? I don't know. This is the fourth or fifth annual trunk or treat at Home Depot. It begins at 6:00, goes to 7:30. Bring out your children after you're done trick-or-treating in Hammond, which is 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And it's always a good time for all of the children. And that is how change happens. One person, one gesture, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
See the correspondence that says you're currently invited to join Mayor McDermott on Friday, October 30th, from noon to 3:00 at the grand opening of the City Dowling Park Athletic Complex, 3025 JF Menhoney Drive. A ribbon-cutting of shirt program will take place on the site at 1:00 p.m.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinances, third and final passes, there aren't on. Moving on to introduction of ordinances, Clerk Golick.
Item A, ordinance 15-47 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of plan proceeds for program year 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with the public hearing set for November 9th, 2015.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs for first and second place, 1547, and council as a whole. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second granted.
Item B, ordinance 15-48 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department grant fund.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
First and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with the public hearing set for November 9th, 2015.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs, place 1548, council as a whole. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on first and second of 1548? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second granted.
Item C, ordinance 15-49 sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one light item to another.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval, first and second reading, refer to council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Henoza, first and second, place at council as a whole. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have an amendment, 15-49A, to replace 15-49. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs for amending 15-49, 1549A. Is there any discussion?
Put that as council as a whole.
Council as a whole. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second granted.
Item D, ordinance 15-50 sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 8514, also known as the Hammond zoning ordinance, and amending ordinance number 9297 for purposes of amending the planned unit development district ordinance for the Columbia Center planned unit development.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with the notice of intent to consider on November 9th our next meeting. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Koinski, with the notice of intent on November 9th, place it in council as a whole on 1550. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second granted.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 15R-19 sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hammond authorizing the filing of an annual action plan application and designating signatories for payment vouchers of letters of credit for the 2016 annual action plan programs.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 15R-19.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of 15R-19. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
This resolution is providing decent housing and suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities for the persons of low and moderate income.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote on 15R-19.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. 15R-19 passes, eight zero, one absent.
Item B, fifth, uh, Resolution 15R-20 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. A resolution naming Monday, November 2nd, be recognized as color the world orange day to raise awareness of CRPS RSD.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 15R-20.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spitali for final passage of 15R-20. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to read this. Prior to one of our residents coming to me to increase awareness about this syndrome, I had no idea what it was. So, for the general public, I think that probably there aren't many of us out there who know what this is. So, I would like to read the resolution in its entirety. Whereas complex regional pain syndrome, also known as CP, uh, CRPS, is a rare chronic, long-term, and progressive condition characterized by severe pain, inflammation, and changes in the skin. Patients commonly describe the pain as a burning sensation which affects one of the arms, legs, hands, or feet. And whereas CPRS causes pain that is severe and continuous. Patients describe it as a burning pain. Some have said it feels like a combination of burning and electrical shock. Part of, uh, part or all of a limb may be affected, such as an arm, leg, hand, or foot. The pain is triggered by an injury and is much worse than one would expect. For example, a patient who sprained an ankle may experience an unbearable burning sensation. And whereas complex regional pain syndrome, also known as reflex sympathetic dystrophy, is a painful nerve disease in which there is no cure. It has been called the suicide disease, as many who suffer from this commit suicide. And whereas Color the World Orange Day was started to raise awareness of this painful disease. And whereas the Hammond Common Council wishes to declare Monday, November 2nd, 2015, as Color the World Orange Day and encourage all members and staff to wear orange that day in recognition of this painful disease. And now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond, that this is the will of the citizens of Hammond, by and through the Hammond Common Council, that Monday, November 2nd, 2015 be known in Hammond as Color the World Orange Day. And I would request that everyone, please, remember on November 2nd to wear orange. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote on 15R-20.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. 15R-20 passes, eight zero, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you Clerk Golick. Moving on to new unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I just want to send my condolences out to Pastor Richard Hinton, who passed away last week, and he was going to be funeralized Saturday at the House of Hope in Chicago. My condolences to his family and to the entire congregation.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, we're coming up on the council meetings for November and December. We're going to keep our first two meetings in November and December. We're going to keep November 9th and December 14th. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to cancel the meeting for November 20, 23rd?
Mm-hmm.
And the meeting for December 28th. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Henoza, second by Councilwoman Vines for cancellations of the last two meetings of the month in November, which is the 23rd, and December, which is the 28th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. Any other new unfinished business?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add ordinance 1551 to the agenda for consideration.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Yes.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Point of order for suspension of rules for ordinance, we have to do a roll call vote.
Clerk Golick roll call vote on suspension of the rules.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Roll call passes eight zero, one absent. Rules are suspended.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to move through first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with the public hearing set for November 9th, 2015. So...
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson for first and second reading, and a public hearing set for November 9th on 1551. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like this time to bring up Marty and Amy.
Clerk Golick.
Uh, ordinance 15-51, the sponsor is Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate new funds to the operating balance for the Hammond Sanitary District's Sewer Maintenance Fund 608.
Thank you Clerk Golick.
Good evening, Mr. President and councilperson. My name is Rachel Montes. I am the business manager at the sanitary district. We are wanting to do an additional appropriation for our sewer maintenance fund. We are going to allocate some funds to balance the budget so we can end the year of 2015 in, in the black.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? All those in favor, first and second of 1551?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First and second on the public hearing set for 11:09:15. Passes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I was under the impression that they were trying to get that passed tonight. No?
Public hearing.
Any public hearing?
Mr. President.
Need a motion to go back to regular order of business?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henoza. Go back to regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, one more announcement that I would like to make. This coming Wednesday, October 28th, is the final mayor's night out of the year. It will be at Hess Elementary School, 3640 Orchard Drive, beginning at 6:30. This is an excellent opportunity for our residents, not only in the sixth district, but throughout the city, to take the opportunity to address any concerns they may have to each of our department heads and Mayor McDermott. So, I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
For the last time, excuse me, I'd like to announce the Hammond Veterans Appreciation Day Parade, the second annual, will be November seventh, Saturday, leaving from Olicot, Olicot and one hundred and seventy-third, and going down one hundred and seventy-third past Purdue Cal to Hesco Park at the memorial for the veterans there with a brief ceremony. If you are a veteran, you're welcome to walk, if you have difficulty with that, transportation will be provided for you. Also, if you're not a veteran and you just want to say thank you, I'm sure someone will have some candy sticking my neck out there, but come on out, we hope the weather's great, everyone's talked about thanking the veterans, this is a chance to do it, thank you.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
This Friday, at seven o'clock, there's going to be a cat fight right across the street. We're going to have the Griffith Panthers playing the Hammond High Wildcats, so come on out there Friday at seven o'clock, and Hammond High, I believe, is nine and one, ten and one, so it's going to be a heck of a cat fight out there, so come on out and chill out in Wildcats, thank you.
Any other new unfinished business? New unfinished, new unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. Only Speaker of the Evening, Mr. George Stoya. Motion adjourned?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.